Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we need to approve minutes. We have the minutes of August 1st meeting and the minutes of the special meeting on August the first and minutes of the July 21st.
I'll make the motion to approve all three minutes.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve all three minutes. Excuse me. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Mr. Carroll, I want to make a motion to approve all claims as presented.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
I'll say.
So I have a motion and a second to approve all claims as presented. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. And with that, we're ready to go to August's best partners and 2023 budget requests of salary.
We have finished in our type of that commissioner and your Q cap budgets. You should have those in your packet. So we need to approve those and we also need to do some other actions. Do this first?
Yeah. Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve both the Q cap development budget and commissioner's budget for next year. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
I just want you to be silent.
Send the paper back. No, just the last page.
How many copies you need?
Oh, just one. The other is that you have looked at all your department heads or not just the department heads, all departments and their budgets and that you are moving them on to the council now. Are you that kind of motion? If you so desire?
I'll make the motion to approve all budgets, like department heads. Anyone moving them to the council?
I have a motion to approve.
Actually, you should say that you have reviewed them.
We have reviewed them. Yeah, we've reviewed them. So what should our motion be, Billy?
That you have reviewed all budgets presented to the auditor and that you are now forwarding them on for council board.
Okay, let's have a minute motion.
Okay, I'll say. You got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passed.
Next is your recommendation for salary increase. Can you put an A?
Is this?
There's no paper.
Okay. What do we do?
That's what guys discuss.
How am I saying? Pay increase because they have eight percent?
You're recommending?
Eight percent.
Eight percent.
So did you say?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to request from the council, eight percent across the board. Which I understand is not quite up to the inflation. So the way we can step back here this year and see what happens. A call for vote, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Then on to Gatsby 34 contract. I've given all of you two contracts this year. Peterson Consulting is one that we have right now. And we renew every year. Or there's a new one here from consulting service. And that's Mike Dole, he is a former state board of accounts person. And I gave those to you to look at.
I looked at them. They're a part of the form.
You will have to look with us more than we do best, if you're one of them and you have a favorite different board?
With looking at them, I mean, I work really well with Peterson's too. And I work well with Mike Dole because he audited us several times. But Mike has been in the enhanced regulatory reporting in his contract. I don't believe it was in this other one, did you see that Ted?
I didn't see it. That's the only difference I can see.
And that is something?
I didn't even know what advanced regulatory reporting had.
Yeah, it's a new recording.
What's his name, Mike?
Mike Dole, D O L L, Mike Dole.
Was he fair when he was the state board of council?
That's a good question.
I believe he was, but I'm sure there's others probably didn't think so. But I did any write-up either, so.
I'll make the motion to approve Mike Dole. Since he's got the new updated version of CD.
A motion and a second to go with double consulting. Any questions?
Okay, so it doesn't matter.
Call for a vote, all in favor of the motion to go with double consulting, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Yes?
Cost, what does it cost? Please.
Maxed out seventeen fifty.
Yeah, and this is lower than what we have, so seventeen fifty.
Seventeen grand?
One thousand seven hundred.
Thank you. It's Monday.
Come, we're in the difference board.
I have trouble with that all the time. Once the what numbers are longer, it really gets rough for me.
The next thing is recycling and I'm just recording what I promised I would, okay? So I've had several phone calls and my girls have had several phone calls on the status of the reopening of the recycling at this transfer station. I've asked them to call the commissioners and they refuse to, so I don't know why.
Yeah, I told her it wasn't a permanent situation. She had health issues and she had a new part-time, but I think we're up and going pretty decent. Maybe we can go back to regular hours September 1st. I got that stuff up there myself today, so I'll talk to her.
You're ever gonna put on that? No, I have to figure it out.
It's a change and some people work during the recycling during the week anymore. So we aren't open on Saturdays out there, some people Saturdays also.
My recommendation to people, call.
I have told them that too.
She's supposed to be getting the answering machine, so if she can't come to work, she can call in the number, type in a code, and she can change the message if she could be open or not that day, so. That should help any place.
So you're gonna stop through to that?
Yeah, I definitely do.
Okay, let's uh, can you tell us how that's going with the next meeting?
Yeah.
Can you write that down first to have a discussion on that next meeting?
And that's the sixth, right?
Yes, that'd be Tuesday to the sixth. And that, I think on that.
You all complete?
I believe so.
So we're ready for Nancy Weaver, Charles Carroll, chapter of B A R. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
I represent the local chapter of the Dodgers in American Revolution. And usually yearly between September seventeenth to the twenty-third, we have a display downstairs. It's a six-foot table. And this year's themes are two. One, the first one, the original one, was a difference in the security of mail-in absentee ballots versus in-person voting. And the second one, one of our members is a good historian and he likes to have a no-tread-on-me flag. It'll be about, the one I can see, about a foot by a foot and a half on the table. And it's there, she's going to have an explanation of all the aspects of the no-tread-on-me. So I'm asking permission for that discussion.
It's from September nineteenth to the twentieth?
Yeah. Well, the seventeenth is a Saturday, so. That's actually Constitution Day.
Is there gonna be during courthouse hours?
Well, it'll be put up during courthouse hours and taken down during courthouse hours.
I make the motion to approve the question.
Okay. We have a motion to, and a second. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
We're welcome here. Orders looking at your gym.
Good, thank you.
We are ready for surveyor's eye shot.
Man, there you are, man, I forgot to pitch you.
They're together.
Both together, I forgot to.
Well, those are the requests, I guess. They don't have tomatoes. No tomatoes.
They're back in the back. That cucumber, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm coming to you guys to ask about making the county surveyor vehicle a take-home vehicle. It sits over by the ambulance garage now. I figured it up and we're less than, I mean, if I worked every day, that without taking any sick time or anything like that, it's gonna be less than three thousand miles a year. Figured it out, it's about three gallons a week. Didn't get gas, which I'm willing to pay for three gallons a week. So that way it's not affecting my budget any on the fuel. But just a lot of times we get, I get calls on weekends about things, farmers are out doing stuff and they want me to come out wrapped in and look at while they're there, so. I mean, I used to live only two miles away, now I'm six miles, so it's a little further and more gas. Price of gas going up there. Plus, a lot of times when we get calls, it's when they're not busy and that's usually when it's raining. And then I gotta walk two blocks over in the rain to get into the vehicle. Plus, in winter time, they pile us in over there. I mean, it's not on purpose, but I mean, we gotta shovel snow behind vehicles when we get a big storm to get our vehicles out, plus we drive our vehicles over there and sit there and stay in our own vehicle while we're letting the other one be frost and everything like that, so. I was just asking that they'll drive it back and forth on that, it's gonna be straight back and forth to home, nothing else, so. And then call out, so. Maybe also maybe be able to clean it out and keep it washed and stuff like that, a little easier to do.
Have you ever had any vandalism over the building or?
I'm not sure if I would say it's vandalism, but there was, like I stated previously, there was something hit the back of my bumper and I got it buffed out and I'm not sure who it was, there's not cameras, but with the new restaurant gonna be opening here, I think within a couple of weeks, or actually maybe this week. After five o'clock, it's open to the public, which that parking lot's gonna be full. So, and right now, there's usually about five or six vehicles, that's not counting vehicles parked there during the day. So my request is the same as Donnie, I live six blocks. I sweep that at home, I clean it at home on my watermill, so it's just six blocks. It create a parking spot for the employees that park there during the day and keep it away from and add more parking for the restaurant at night, so.
So when you, when you guys come into work, you just park it around the square here where you do?
Where we normally park, yeah, I mean, I usually, I mean, yeah, there's a parking right there across the courthouse right there by the office staff. You park there all day, you don't have a two-hour minimum parking.
And I too get called during the day, can you come expect something to bank once the, it's last minute, easily we set them on Tuesday, but if there's a pinch and they're doing financing, I'm gonna get to garden it, so. Or just random calls about properties or complaints, get them all day long, so. But again, I'm six blocks away, so if I had to put gas in it, that's fine. Whatever you guys wanna work out, if it's true, I'll just try to free up some space over.
Are you ready to draw them?
I'm willing to say a couple of draws. I think about the take-home vehicles out of the personnel policy and there are some, some rules that they would have to buy the, buy the policy, we would need a copy of their insurance papers.
Thank you for this.
To put in the, your personal.
Have you seen them?
Yes.
To put it in your file and a copy of driver's license, which we probably already have.
Oh, homeowners insurance.
I think it's vehicle insurance.
I think it's the law that's gonna be part of it, but my understanding.
I don't think this has some insurance to me.
The employees of a company in this county that drive a vehicle and they're given permission to drive basically a company car, their insurance, their automobile insurance is primary, it's always the driver, their insurance is primary, it's not the county's insurance. That's why the policy requires proof of the driver's insurance. It has to be submitted periodically at each, at each renewal of the policy. So that's why that's collected.
So we have to carry it, just we just have to show proof we got insurance or our personal?
You don't carry, those cars are already carried, but you have to prove that you have your own auto insurance and leave it in the personnel file.
Okay.
The other thing would be is to, this will be considered a part of their wage. This is a taxable value of the use of employee wages, so. I don't know, we are not gonna do that.
At the state, I had a tank on the vehicle and they did buy a truck charge, so I paid about fifty per trip, so it was three dollars a day. Of course, that was, I don't know how many years ago. But that's, that's how they did it, that really does a difference, but.
We've got other things that are due. I think, I mean, I think you need to call Kent Hurwitz for, to be sure we got the latest information on it. Especially on the taxable value. And there may need to be a policy adopted, I don't think it's covered in our, is it covered?
Well, there's some information in here, it's kind of.
I think we need to check that, you know.
Because, yeah. I'm like on proof that they put the gas in, they can't use county card or the WEX card. The other thing that was brought up, I talked to a different officer, was a take-home for a work log. When they use the vehicle, even if it's personal, then they need to write down personal. That would be driving, driving to work or whatever, maybe not, I don't know, it'd be too hard, depending on what they decide.
Community is inter, it's personal. You see the notice, it's not whether it's the vehicle, who owns the vehicle that counts, it's whether or not community is considered a personal use. And that's, that's where the tax of it comes in. You're using a, an employer providing a vehicle for a personal use when you're using it community, that's where that three dollars a day came. But that's, that was the state's policy, I don't know what our policy is and that's something we need to ask.
I don't know, I can check that out for the next meeting.
Well.
We really aren't considering that, correct me if I'm wrong, but we really are considering this to be giving you a car for personal use, we're giving, we're letting you protect your car home so that when you do the work you have to do, you have the automobile there and all the equipment that's in it and all that stuff already there. So I don't, I don't really think.
I think what he's saying is driving to work is the personal, is that what you said?
Right, community to work is considered, considered personal use. But I would like to give a second opinion on that, see if that's changed, you know, that's the way it always has been.
Well, in the past, I wouldn't, probably wouldn't even be considered as, because we don't have people like these two that actually go out on business sites all the time. I know he's on the road all the time, I'd drive him one day and he was out way out. And I'm like, where are you going? He's out taking property.
Well, beforehand, we didn't have a car either and I think.
In this way, man, I started out using my own private vehicle and just kind of working my way up.
Got paid mileage for it.
Yeah.
So let us find out through currently, I don't think, I mean, if you're willing to pay the taxes, that's up to you guys. So we're probably gonna make some other employees upset that you can get a vehicle to take home.
Go start off the health?
It's part of the God scripture, go inspect properties and it's, so it's, they get upset, so that's a part of the position I do, is getting out in the bottom of the county and keeping an eye on properties and especially when you get complaints. So setting them to the side and not letting them have it's not, not doing the job, so.
I'm in favor of you. We need to follow terms and wires.
Health Department does that health board, what they have set up. I know the environmentalist is pulled out, that would be the only one that could probably take it, they have to have.
Does he live in the county?
Mm-hmm. But I do wanna bring up the logs, no matter whether this gets passed or not, we have not done that. But I believe, I talked to Donnie about it, you need to keep a log, right, on everything that you do. Okay, we need to have that, we need to have a copy.
So every year, junior year, whatever?
Probably a quarter, I think it is.
Yeah, it should be a lot more for them, home vehicles, you know, and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got every. Two thousand sixteen, is it?
I didn't get to talk to Cameron, but that should be done. And honestly, it should be done on all, I mean, even like the environmentalist should probably write it down. And I know EMA, EMA does, don't you? You have a log when you go out?
I start by morning and night.
Do what?
I got it somewhere.
Okay.
So we'll be all right with you, gentlemen, if we have this final decision on the sixth, that we?
Yeah, yeah, we just want you to sort this. I'm sorry, someone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care of it on the sixth, we'll get all the answers.
Thank you.
Morning, Kent.
Good morning. I received a request from Norfolk Southern Railroad to close a couple crossings in the county. One in Rockfield and the other in Burrows.
One in Burrows?
Yep. The crossing in Rockfield would be Walnut Street, which is the westernmost crossing. And the one in Burrows would be Madison Street, which is also the westernmost crossing. And the two that are with their request, if we allow them to close one crossing, either one of those, they'll give us thirty-five thousand dollars. If we allow them to close both, we'll get ninety-five thousand dollars. But it's up to the county whether we allow them to close a crossing. They would take out all the asphalt in between and then set up signage.
Could thirty-five for one or ninety-five for two?
I can see the one in Burrows, it would be the west one.
And we don't have to make a decision today, so.
I would like to talk to EMA and the fire chiefs and the, and the sheriff. I mean, those roads are pretty easy access to them, make it shorter. Thought like to hear what they say.
I can send them a copy of like their request.
Cause if we just close a road, a railroad crossing, cause that one they're wanting to close is right in front of Rockfield's fire department.
That's amazing, why?
Not anymore.
No, not anymore.
Not anymore, it's the one, it's the other one now.
When I go, I take that route.
Yeah. Yeah, I would like. Rockfield's probably more hurt than Burrows would be, cause Burrows are already on the other side of the tracks, so it wouldn't matter which one they were cross. You bet there's only so many houses. Seen twelve houses across the tracks of Burrows, or right there. And even, and close that one, everybody always goes down.
I think it's one hundred.
One hundred, yes, I think. One in Burrows don't concern me, but one in Rockfield would concern me.
I'll, I'll get the information out to EMA or EMS, you said, our departments? Okay.
I also mentioned to you, Dr. Dustine's also.
Do you have a copy of the trustees?
I just, I should get that information.
Well, I guess, I would like to hear a few comments, citizens in Rockfield, Burrows, how they feel about losing one of their crosses. If we are so fortunate as to have that in the paper, why, I would, I would like to request their input. Their town, their crossing, what year. Okay?
What they will need, once a decision is made, is a resolution passed forward to Norfolk Southern. After they get that thing, they'll start the closure process. So it's been given you time.
I was hoping they didn't, you guys, that way we can at least make it to the mayor's meeting.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay. Anything else for us today?
Just an update, we are having our auction this Thursday. The actual auction starts about four o'clock, but you can get there earlier and register. Should only take a couple of hours. Our paving program has started, they're about forty percent complete there. Our chip and seal program is in process also, we're about fifty percent there, finished, so.
The fact the lighting is cool or whatever, it's not as hot.
Well, we've had some issues with our equipment, we've got to, we have a couple pieces go down, we're gonna get them repaired before we can get them going again. We're off the road again.
I've had some very good remarks.
I'll pass those on.
Appreciate you.
Are they gonna, are we gonna put stone down on the ones that are just being paved so it's not such a big drop-off?
Our plan is to put the ground shoulders down on all of them.
Does someone complain to them, I'm complaining about a new road? And they said, well, the road itself, it's, it's the drop-off on the road. And I said, yeah, I understand, until we find out. I figured we would, cause we did all. I figured we would, cause we did on the others.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the plan right now, so. We'll wait till they're finished paving, then we'll get the, and our chip and seal, seal piece done, and then we can start over on the, well.
Now, on one hundred north, there's, uh, east of seventy-five, there's a lot of new pavement down through there.
That was done last year, I believe, yeah, that was done last year.
Yeah, it looks like it was. There's a spot where it goes down to a creek and back up again, and it's, it looks like it's all washed out or something, or gravel, but, you know what?
Uh, that's where we had that major accident, um, with a car flipping over.
Oh.
Uh, there was a field tile that had collapsed, um, softened all the soils underneath the road, which sunk, and it created an bump. So we pulled, tore all that pavement out, had, uh, we, we put a cold, uh, a casing pipe through, and the farmer's connecting this tile on either side, uh, and then we brought down the stone. We are, I'm talking with Rethorley now about repaving that section. Before they.
Just what I noticed about it was, you know, you go, it's gotta probably too fast, the speed, cause, cause the asphalt's so smooth and everything down through there, and then all of a sudden you cover that dip and.
Yeah, cause we're finishing, um, in fact, Rethorley just paved from ten over five hundred to State Road twenty-nine, and they will be paving from one hundred to State Road seventy-five. That's part of this year's paving program.
Good, Dale?
So, there are seven cutouts between, well, just before seven and five, all the way to State Road twenty-nine.
Driveways.
No, the cutouts where you've, uh, chiseled out the pavement, and they're pretty rough, is that gonna be filled?
Yeah, they'll, they'll pave, those are over, so that'll be paved.
Okay.
If I come in and I say I wanna put a tile under the road, and I, so I need to get a, I need to make a.
Correct, yes.
Who fixes it after?
Uh, the, the property owner who put it in fixes the tile.
Yeah, but we're about to ask, oh, Tom.
Um, normally they bring it up to, with stone, that's what our standard is right now. I would like to change that, so I'm, I'm in the process of getting information for how to do that. And then, once they bring it up, if it settles, we, we bring stone back in, fill it back in, and then, um, either, um, pave it over it, or, or a chip and seal, or, or a patching.
That's something I have had some complaints about, uh, through, through time, not just this year.
Yeah, I believe the board makes that cut, should maintain it for longer than it is.
Okay.
Now to put it back to the roof?
Yeah.
So you're working on that, Ken?
Uh-huh, yeah, I, I would like to divide that from that process, yeah.
All right. Do you need help from our attorney pit?
I'll probably run by him.
Okay.
I apologize, I should've gotten to you a couple of weeks ago and hasn't forgotten. Off of Pirate's Roost Road, and I don't know where nine fifty ends and Pirate's Roost Road begins.
Nine fifty is the east-west.
Yeah.
And when it, when it starts heading south, it's about two.
Okay, well, down in there, there's a private road goes off from it, right along where there's cottages on one side, and there's all the oak docks and everything on the other side. And then there's a little short study, I suppose there's ten houses back on, on the dead end road, it's a private road. And the lady insisted, I go down with her there and look, and she says, see? And of course I didn't see anything, she says, that's cause it's gone, her sign is gone. Said your sign man took down the, he had a sign that said.
Private road?
Private road, and the name of the road, I think.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, I would appreciate it if you would.
You don't know the name of the street, do you?
No, I didn't.
I, I, there's a couple of private streets off there, but I.
First one to the left, you would get down on the, on the lake level. And, uh, I think, I said there was a, I don't know if it was a dead end or, or, but anyway, there's a private road sign there.
Okay, you know, I'll, I'll run by and look at it.
Rock Park Road?
Huh?
Rock Park? Is it those houses in the?
That's not the name she gave me, if you, you go down the hill, and it goes back kinda this direction, and there's a whole bunch of houses that are not on the lake back here, they all have boat out.
Sea Beach, is that there?
No, I've seen Sea Beaches further south.
It's to the right.
Yeah, several people in here know that area pretty well, they're like.
No, I'll, I'll look at it.
Little street though.
I'll look at it, if it's, you know, if it's missing, we'll put it up on the signs, so I go.
I will tell her then.
Okay.
Uh, one other thing, I had a guy come to me with quite a long list of problems, that he had with three hundred dollars from, from, uh, the Heartland to, uh, well, the other side of Wilson Bridge. And I drove it right that day to look at it. I'd just like to go through the list for you.
Okay, no problem.
Yes.
It's Lazy Lane.
Lazy Lane, that sounds about right, yeah.
Rather than Palm Beach, I think.
But anyway, I need to come over with that.
Okay, no problem.
Anybody have anything to bring up, yes?
Um, a reader contacted the comet and said that the Pyramid Bridge was being negatively impacted by the detour, four twenty-one. And I called Kent, did you get out and look at that?
I went out and looked at it, and I called the contractor that did that work, he's gonna be looking at it. So once I get that information back, I'll get to you.
Okay, well, I can tell the person that you're looking at, okay.
This is the Pyramid Road you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, it's the Pyramid Bridge, I'm.
Pyramid Bridge?
Yeah.
We had an overlay done last, last year, I think it's a thin layer of concrete, and there's some cracks in it, and. Concrete will crack, but I'm not, we had some other issues which they repaired, so I'll, I'll, I'll see what they're doing.
Yeah, the reader said that, uh, heavy trucks are going over that bridge, uh, and thinks that it's pretty bad, but I didn't look at it, what do I know?
Heavy trucks go over that bridge all the time, I find out the number of them would be down, right?
Correct, but, you know, with that detour, yeah, that's what they're using.
Thank you, Ken, thanks.
Anybody else have a comment?
Do we need to put a sign up on there if you're ever starting to wait enough to cross it? I know there's probably one there already, but.
Actually, there's no road on that bridge, right now.
Great bridge.
Yeah.
It's a good bridge.
I just wanna stay for that one, yeah, I just wanna stick around with it.
Well, we'll have to have Kent look at that to see what he thinks. Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, and with that, we're ready for the mayor.
The mayor and.
All right, where are you?
Mostly Joe.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mostly you.
So, I made bigger maps for our older eyes.
Do you have one to your mind, Joe? Do you have one on?
If he.
Well, I was just gonna put it up there.
Yeah, that would be great if you could do it. So, good morning, my name is Joe Mayfield, I'm the current president of the city's redevelopment commission, and I'm here today to, to give you some background information on what we've been doing this year. And that is considering the expansion of our commercial, Delphi Commercial's tip to the northeast near the Andersons. After, in, in the beginning of the year, we learned that that property, the property to the north and a little bit east of the Andersons sold that one. And that the people that bought it were interested in developing it. And then we began to look at the possibility of expanding our commercial tip to the northeast to encompass that property. And so, in March, we have letter, we signed letters of intent with Baker, Tilling, and Barnes and Thornburg to begin the legislative process of looking into the expansion of our commercial tip to the northeast. Now, the reason I am here, and that's previously we done, some, a considerable number of the parcels are in the county for this expansion to the northeast. And so, we, we will, we will ask for a resolution eventually to, to approve the inclusion of county parcels into the expanded Delphi Commercial tip. And so, for today, I wanted you to see, I wanted you to see the map of our intended expansion that goes out, up through your hand, towards two eighteen.
Is that the yellow, is that the yellow part?
Yeah, so you can, you can see, so, so the, the major areas concerned with the expansion are these two areas, and then potentially here around, around the Anders, the Andersons. And so, and there's a little bit of development potential here. These were the two new properties that were purchased in two thousand, in twenty twenty-one, and, and are interested in industrial development in that area. I would call it light logistical industrial.
Where is the city limits here?
Yeah, everyone, so.
So, these two parcels, which are about sixty acres, are within the corporate limits. This small parcel is not, and, and the other parcels that you see are, uh, in the county. So, about sixty out of the, I think there's sixty acres of, of roughly that are in the city, and about three hundred and twenty that are in the county.
Are you considering annexation of that area?
Uh, possibly down the road, mostly we want to be able to extend water and sewer, uh, to the, um, industrial areas. Uh, and of course, um, the Kirkoffs, I think successfully got, uh, that parcel changed to I two, is that correct, Cameron? Uh, so, uh, this is now, um, you know, ready, I think, for, uh, development as soon as a few more hurdles are accomplished. And, uh, the city does have, um, some, obviously there's a water tank very close to this area, and, uh, it's a water extension from there to the properties, and also probably the addition of another lift station, and then some, uh, collection lines, uh, will be the main investments that the R B C will bank through the tip bond. The Delphi R B C. And we've been working with the Carroll County Economic Development Corporation, uh, and of course, the property owners with the Andersons, and, uh, you know, other interested properties out in that area, since, basically, just about, since the properties were, were bought, these were Dennis Moore's parcels out in that area that, uh, uh, still live back here.
I've had a lot of phone calls on this, a lot of people, they could put too much. And they said they felt like there's a, a bombing project, putting pressure on the city. Now, on this, um, one of your people resigned from your board, right?
Yes, one of, one of the, uh, people who was on the.
Commission.
The commission did resign, uh, unfortunately, um, what was, uh, expressed in the paper is, is just not correct for our tip area. This is not a taxpayer bond.